We got audio, so. Alright, so I will open the meeting of July 7th. We are at the Police Department Meeting Room. You'll all join me in saluting. Your flag allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Renan. Okay. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. So, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from June 16th. Open session, June 16th Executive Session. June 23rd Open Session, June 23rd Executive Session. And the minutes from June 30th.
Motion made to approve.
And the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Next, for the business. Approval of school, approval of warrants. I entertain a motion to approve FY20 School. Is there a warrant number? FY20 School Warrants for $61,938.46. FY20 General Warrant Number One for $70,352.64. FY20 General Number Two for $58,029.23. FY20 Payroll for $237,779.62. FY21 School and General for $1,053,254.17. And FY21 Payroll for $90,937.41.
So.
I will second. Any discussion we have on any of that? All in favor?
Aye.
I don't think they can hear, just so you know. So they can't hear either, because Sarah just texted me she has no audio.
This is a different system.
Hmm.
It seems. Thank you for the flag. We're gonna get a solo one for you. Can you hear me now, is this on?
He can hear.
Yeah.
Can you hear us now? Is this audio on? You're muted, but it's like. You don't want to hear this stuff. We can't hear. We can't hear them. The town hears? It's the first time they've come here from the station. Does this mean one two? Can you hear?
Tara says nothing.
Can they read our lips?
Signs certain things that they may understand.
Do you have more than one meeting going?
I don't know, did Tara hear us, did she say?
She said she cannot. She said weird sounds, that was it.
That's all.
That's it.
Can you hear us now? I don't know. I don't know, but I'm not gonna fix it today, so. Let's see, transfer requests is next. So we got a transfer from the Reserve Fund, $500 to the Fire Department, General Repairs. There's $92 in the account. And we need to install six new windows upstairs at the fire station. Three windows were purchased through insurance and three through EMS. They just need money to install. It's already been to the Finance Committee who approved it, so. I entertain a motion to approve the money from the Finance Committee, $500.
So.
I will second, all in favor?
Aye.
What else we got?
Another invoice.
CBPG. Grant money for a total of $2,0691.85. Pushing the monies from the Mass Department of Housing and Community Development. $2,0691.85, I entertain a motion to approve that money.
Yeah.
So.
I will second, all in favor?
Yeah.
So that's that. Let's see, approved highway bid for gas. So there was an invitation to bid on diesel and unleaded gas. Accepted and opened on July 1st, 2020, at 2:00 PM. Successful low bidder for diesel is RJ McDonald. It's the Highway Superintendent's recommendation that RJ McDonald be awarded the FY2021 Diesel Fuel Bid. So there were two bidders, RJ McDonald. RJ McDonald came in at $1.67 a gallon. Pomp and Son's was $1.78 a gallon. We did participate in the CMRPC FY2021 State Bid and recommend that we accept the low bid for unleaded gas awarded to Dennis Burke at the rate of $1.42 a gallon. So it looks like we joined with some kind of a regional, regional thing.
Does that mean it still comes from RJ McDonald? Only via two CMRPCs?
CMRPC. Got a group of towns together, it looks like, participating towns. So they put out a group procurement, so we got a better price by joining a group. And I came in at $1.42. So wearing with Brookfield, Chatham, Dudley, Grafton, Highway, Nubry, Oldham, Princeton.
So McDonald didn't get.
McDonald get the diesel.
He get the diesel.
And Burke is getting unleaded gas.
Mr. Chairman, does that include an escalation clause for diesel?
I don't see one in here, and I was looking for that earlier, it said no, it was an issue. And I don't know if it's because it's through CMRPC that.
Are both of them through CMRPC? Or is it just separate?
Just the gas. Just the, just the regular gas, unleaded gas award. That's through Burke, through CMRPC State Bid. Diesel is through RJ McDonald, and the diesel always had the adjustment clause.
Do you see it listed with that?
According to him.
This is just the invitation to bid, we haven't seen the contract yet. This is not the contract.
The agreement's right here. So they quoted an agreement. Agreement is between North Brookfield and a contractor who was the lowest bidder. So this one's just for unleaded gas, he circled unleaded gas, so this is just the unleaded gas one. At a firm price of $1.42 a gallon, so there is no. There's no adjustment clause.
So then if it goes up or down, it's a $1.42.
Yeah, so it goes down to 95 cents like it did last year for three, four months, so it's still paying $1.42.
Yeah. So then you work out what it is.
Yeah. So you wanna table this for another week until we.
Yep.
Get from him and adjust that? Alright, so we'll table that and tell Jason we need an adjustment clause. He told us that, didn't he?
At least with diesel, it should, it should be, according to Massachusetts, there should be a number that that is based on.
So when did, didn't we talk to him about escalation clauses? And he told us that it was, it was gonna be one in the next one? Because we lost? Five thousand or so dollars. Because there was no escalation clause, it went down to 95 cents and we were paying a buck something.
We paid two something.
Two something, great. Alright, so, moving on. Highway mechanic job description? That's something we have to. In mechanic?
Yeah. If you wanna go through it, you can do it next week.
And this is different from the mechanic's job as it is right now?
Yes, because it describes supervisory skills and stuff, so it was a different position.
Okay. Yeah, I guess Jason, Jason put together, right?
Yes.
Different. Let me just make sure. We're not giving away any priority over this position.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
There's a lot of people that are complaining, just so you know, that they can't hear. I, I know, and I know you probably can't do anything about it, I'm just, that's all. Tara just told me she can hear everything.
She can hear everything?
She can hear what they're saying.
Oh, yeah, because you.
Because, yes, she's on speaker here with me.
Yeah, well unfortunately, it's a technical difficulty and there's nothing I can do about it, so.
So if you can let them know unfortunately it's a technical difficulty, you'd be welcome to come if they want to sit with you. Welcome to get their help. Thank you.
Yeah. I don't see any problem with the job description for head mechanic's position. Do you see anything that?
I'd be quick. It, it's creating a new position for a head mechanic, if you want to.
Right.
So there could be a mechanic under him, if they were qualified.
Right, yeah. Yeah, but we need that in order to.
So this has to go through the union with you.
Right.
Anyways.
We have to submit it to the union, they have to accept it as a new position.
So they have to approve it before or after us?
Well, we approved the, the job description, which is different from the job that he's doing now.
Correct.
Once we approve it, we send it to them.
Yeah.
They approve it, then. There's an addendum to the contract that'll last another year, and it'll all be put in the contract. I entertain a motion to approve that, to send out to the union.
Hold.
I will second, and any further discussion? No? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright. New business. We have an appointment of Christopher, how do you pronounce it, Marinen?
Yeah.
Marinen, to the North Brookfield Emergency Management. Came recommended, so. You wanna just stand up and tell us a little bit about your, and that you want the position, and I'll just.
Hi, Chris Marinen. Lives in town with the majority of my life. Served on Fire Department, Police Department, Military. Was actually gonna stay out of public service altogether. And I figured why not, help, you know, get the helping hand when we can. Really, all boils down to it, so.
Alright, thanks.
Glad to have you, if you've got that much experience.
Thank you.
You're good with it?
Yes, I'm recommending it.
Put together a good team.
Perfect. So thanks for coming out, and thanks for volunteering and helping out. You're gonna be helping out with some IT stuff too, so I appreciate that. You couldn't get out of the daywork of the mind.
Next time.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to appoint Christopher Marinen to the North Brookfield Emergency Management. So. I will second, all in favor?
Aye.
And then. Want to talk about moving all future meetings here, rather than the super center.
We have to still do four a month.
Four a month?
Odd weeks, because when I first came on the board, we needed two.
Right.
Stopped for the summer.
We stopped for the summer, and then.
We stopped for the summer again?
Yes.
It's the odd meetings, we only do a couple of things anyway, downtown.
Right.
We'll free this up. It'll be cheaper, we won't have to have.
Yeah.
Outbacks with us. Putting down the line here, but we'll just have two for.
The two warrants?
The warrant.
Right. Yeah, we'll go to that summer schedule again.
Yeah.
I think it'll be easier on everybody. Be a pool meetings a month we don't have to do. What we do on those other meetings is on malls, anyway, we do in regular.
Yeah, well for the longest time, they called them workshops, they were only meetings, they were just workshops to discuss.
Now, we don't have to tie this place up either, and we don't have the capability of. Kill stuff down with the town office.
Right, I'm good with that. So good, that settles that, and we'll put that out.
Yeah.
And we'll have Tara put it up on the town announcement page. Alright.
Thank you.
There was a request from the school to move the CARES Act money from the Town Treasurer to. So they gave us some numbers that they needed for food services for COVID response, which was covered under the CARES Act money. I included it in the request, and it was funded, so we actually have quite a bit of money. And they're looking to transfer it over to pay their food services, $60,326.46.
What would they, what would they do food services for? Would they do takeout meals?
Yeah, there was a bunch of stuff, and I guess it was the meals program for the students that were on meal assistance stuff, so they could still go to the school for meals.
To get the meals, okay.
And it's all covered by CARES Act money, so instead of coming out of the school's budget.
Yep.
CARES Act money pays for it, so. They're just looking for it, we need to. So last week, we talked to the town accountant, she wanted the Board of Selectmen to approve all the CARES Act stuff. To make sure that it was CARES Act money that we had put in for.
Yep.
So it's kinda just a ministerial thing, but. I entertain a motion to make that transfer.
So.
I will second, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so we got for regular agenda items. You got anything else that you wanna add? Alright, so. Public comment period. Through the chair.
You've got two things up.
What's that?
Because you have two things up there, when I was listening, it sounded like you were in an aquarium. Or aliens, I wasn't really sure which, so I had to come down, but I forgot to shut my computer off.
Well, this is our first time at the PD, and they have a computer that's hooked up to the screen, so.
It, yeah.
Evidently Zoom's never been used on it, so we're having a little technical difficulty to.
That's good, because I just came down.
But we'll work it out for the next time.
Yeah.
I'd love to see if you're down to the laptop, you'd be able to get the audio from the other screen, and there'd just be one of them.
Yeah, yeah, because I didn't download the program, so I, I went in through the web.
Yep.
And then, when I hit connect to video.
Yeah.
It then downloaded and opened another one, so I didn't shut off the other one, because I was afraid that I would.
I've done it with the.
Alright, anybody else got something?
Yeah, we still have a safety committee, right?
We do.
Can I make a kind of a request? That they look at some of the side streets going on to some of the more main streets. Stop signage, because there's a lot of them that have stop signs. And today, I was going down Elm Street, and a car blew right out of Arch Street, on Elm Street right in front of me. And it's kind of lightbulb bolted, and, you know, especially when school starts back up, some of those main roads, I think that would be helpful to. Look into maybe some stop signs on. I know you can't do them all, because there's a lot of roads, maybe some of the main roads.
Well, everybody knows in Massachusetts, when you come to the end of the street, they're supposed to stop, so if people would just use their common sense and stop. I know what you're saying, there's a sign. Well, it's like the other things too, we just put up the speed limit flashing signs on Main Street. It is slowing people down.
Very effective so far.
But they should be going slow anyway. These are just reminders, and those signs can be moved. The flashing signs can be moved to other spaces.
I was just thinking particularly, especially this.
Yeah, I know they have trouble on, on these Brookfield roads where Ward Street crosses at the Red Barn. A lot of people blast through that section down there, and I think there is a stop sign there.
Yeah, I, I, some people were advocating for a fullway stop there.
Right, right. So I mean, people need to use their common sense too, but we can ask Highway on the safety.
Yeah, maybe just look into it and see what they think, and, you know, maybe some of the, some of the busier roads. Arch Street kind of slipped in my mind.
Why are they going that fast there anyway? It's only 600 feet long, you know what I mean? They, they, people should use their common sense.
I feel as though the reliance on individuals for common sense will often lead to disappointment. Things like the monitors, the electronic pieces, really great things that help do a little bit of necessary regulation. Because common sense isn't enforceable.
Alright, anybody else? Anybody?
On that topic, the, um, the other day, my daughter was bringing me from the school home. I think it's near Stats, around the post offices, the 25 mile an hour sign. You can't see it until you're like on top of it, because the trees are, they just need to be pruned back.
Is that across from Stats? I'll, I'll.
It's on the, um, going from the school towards downtown. So it's on that same side as the post office. There's a 25 mile an hour sign, but it is a little hard to.
I'll tell Highway tomorrow and get them up there.
I was ready to go there with my clipper, but I was like, nah, can't do that.
Their job, and we can't see all these things, if you see one around the drain. If it's not visible, let us know, and we'll take care of it, because the guys are really grateful. If we ask them to do stuff, and they can't see everything themselves.
No, they have to be in 20,000 places at once.
Yep, yep.
You know, there, there are other similar situations where, where the vegetation is covering signs, and it wouldn't be a, a bad deal for them to pay particular attention as they drive around.
Yep.
I can't think of one off the top of my head, but I do know there are several others.
Yep.
Same situation.
Yep. Maybe we could get the Police Department to make a list also as they're patrolling. Put it on your list, Chris.
Come on it. They have good vision.
Go pass on the buck, right?
Okay, anything else? Anybody else? Yes.
So, uh, let's talk about last Saturday.
Talk about what?
Let's talk about last Saturday.
What about last Saturday?
Town of North Brookfield was able to have a celebratory event. One of the pieces that I wanted to bring to you was the issue that I saw that there were very few people attending the event that brought masks to the event. I was curious to what the Board of Selectmen has to say about that as a matter of large in county parties. Would you like to comment on that?
Uh, nope, everybody's got an individual choice, and I'm not regulating individual people, so that's not this board's job, so. The governor's put out guidance, the guidance is clear, the Board of Health is the one that's in charge of it. They can take out their 4021D books and start writing all the tickets they want. That's, that's the way it is. If it's outside, they were distanced, I mean, people can use their own judgment on that. So the Board of Selectmen's position is we're not, you know, unless you figure.
It wasn't sanctioned by the Board of Selectmen. Somebody actually from out of town organized that, which I don't know who it was. So it had nothing to do with us, and like Dale said, you can do what you want if you're social distancing. They're not far enough apart, we believe, and so actually, and some people in the audience. If you don't wanna wear a mask, or you can't wear a mask, there's a law that says you have to wear a mask.
Quick follow up.
Especially if you're outside. Yes.
Yes, I'm Kathy Previa, kinda new in town, but I used to live in town years ago, and be very active in town. I commend whomever it was that set this up for Saturday. That's wonderful. I heard, I, I was gonna participate when I initially heard that there were gonna be festivities, and I heard there weren't gonna be festivities. And then I heard that there were some things that were done on Saturday. And it's great, in my opinion, it's great, and I think those people who put it together should be commended.
Somebody from Leicester, I think.
Enough already, all this BS.
Kathy, that's a very sweet combination that you have, and I'm sure.
I can hear you.
It's a very sweet combination that you've made, I'm glad for your activity in the town, and I'm sure that the people who organize it are very grateful for you. A quick follow up question, was there a ordinance that was authorized for a parade license for the event? I know that you need to have one in order to occupy space on Main Street, because we were trying to find one ourselves. Do you know if there was a parade ordinance that was issued for the event?
Well, we don't have a parade ordinance that I'm aware of.
Well, alright.
There's a parade ordinance?
There is a parade ordinance.
Where is that located?
It's a P, it's an authorization that needs to be issued for events that want to occupy space on Main Street. It's the reason that we do not.
It's the reason that we were not able to take up the Main Street space when we held our demonstration.
Really?
That's correct.
Who did you go to to get that?
We went to the police department. And the police department was in attendance for this one.
Yeah, so they worked for the other one, so...
Which was held on the sidewalk.
Yeah.
There was no parade ordinance?
No, there is no parade ordinance in town, and if there was, it was the, it's the selectmen's, they get the parade, um, permitting, so, um, it would come to the selectmen. So, uh, if you have a question on what, um, needs to be done in certain situations, you can always come to us and ask. Uh, there is, for future reference, there is a document that we, uh, put out a few years ago uh, because a parade occurred without the knowledge of the police department, or the fire department, or the board of selectmen. And it was, you know, it was a Christmas thing. It was, you know, the school put it together, school parents, but we didn't know about it. So we now have a form that you put out, uh, that if you're going to have some type of event in town, uh, you need to come to the board of selectmen with the proposed activity. And we give an initial okay, that it's okay to, to do the activity. Then you go to the police chief, the fire chief, and you get signatures from all the different safety organizations that need to be notified. Then it comes back to us for a final approval. That's been out for a couple of years now.
This independent organizer put together the activity for the Saturday. Did they go through those channels?
Uh, no.
No? Okay. No, it's good to know.
But, um, then again, protests, according to the governor, are exempt from all sorts of rules and regulations, so...
But you designated the event that he had on the floor as a protest, though.
We didn't do it.
I think we didn't have anything to do with it. I think that's been said a number of times.
Right.
The board of selectmen not have to do with that event. So you can categorize it any way you wish to categorize it in your mind, but as far as a town sanctioning it, it hasn't been done, so...
Do you think that it's responsible for an outside, independent organizer not affiliated with the town to put all this together, register it as a protest, and then have it passed off by the board of selectmen without these signatures being allocated?
Uh, yeah, I'm not gonna...
What happened in West Brookfield with the protests that went on over there?
We had authorization from the police, and we also...
I don't know what this is.
Yeah, and it's absolutely irrelevant to what happens in North Brookfield some.
Sure.
Was, wasn't a protest Saturday? Wasn't it just a festive, festive parade?
That's what I thought.
Well, there was a bunch of people on the side of the road holding flags and stuff.
Mm-hmm.
I didn't know about it till the morning, and I didn't participate, so...
Right.
So... Alright, anybody get anything else for us? No? Here we go, further business. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
What's your name?
I have a second, all favoriters?
Aye.
Good night. Thanks for coming out.